All right. So, we're rocketing ahead, right on schedule at 7:30.
David Wessenthal's been standing in the hallway for a while. Is he here tonight?
He's here to talk a little bit about the various options we have for the SRF funding for Route 9 water lines as well as technicalities associated with the now two articles for land purchases that are under way.
So, let's take care of the police.
Well, wait a minute, and then we still didn't finish the... We did halfway through the RFPs.
Yeah.
We have an appointment with them.
We have an appointment.
Oh, you have an appointment, okay.
Yes. So, let's take our 7:30 appointment now at 8:30.
Sorry.
All right.
What would you like to know?
So, this is the public safety budget discussion. Hit us with it.
Do you want just highlights? Would you like to go line by line, or how would you like to do this?
Highlights.
It's a lot longer than...
You're gonna do the public safety.
I'm gonna do the police.
I mean, you're gonna do the finance committee in March.
Yeah.
Not that we don't count.
I'll sit in front. The way you don't have to yell too loud at me.
Okay.
I think we kind of used up our yelling.
So, I think everyone here is fairly clear on the direction that we'd like to bring the police and the communications department on, and talk about those two budgets obviously, and then we'll do the fire. What I'll do is I'll just talk about the ones that have major changes. Everything else, I mean, you have all the numbers in front of you. There may be some adjustments made, but it's not gonna be anything worth shattering. Very simply put, what we're looking to do is, at the board's request, I've submitted essentially two separate budgets. One of them is a level service budget, and the other one is an expanded service budget. The test that we did in the summertime gave us an idea of what hiring three new full-time police officers would do for us as far as the overtime goes. The police officers are on board with making some reductions in their overtime and changing their contracts significantly in exchange to be placed at different spots on the pay scale for some better money, as well as being on board with the additional officers. They're willing to work with us to obviously reduce this beast of an overtime that we have issues with. We have made some significant policy adjustments, as I said when I went into the slideshow presentation, as well as how we fill shifts to reduce the overtime fairly significantly. Not to get too much into what's happening right now, I know you want to hear about the future, but over the last three fiscal years, according to our BIDAR numbers, we have spent over, you know, I think the average, it's 164, 164,000, 180,000, 165,000. That averages around 167, 168,000 dollars in overtime. Barring some major issues as far as the overtime goes, and we still have the Barney blowout coming up and things like that, we have made a significant reduction in those numbers. This same time last year, we were 19,000 dollars in the hole in our overtime already. We currently have still over 20,000 left in that line. So, we're looking at about 40,000 dollar savings so far, or reduction at least, I should So, we're working towards it. Unfortunately, short of violating the contract, we are essentially done what we can do without looking to hire more personnel. I think it should be noted that what overtime is essentially is paying someone time and a half, that extra four hours that you're paying them for an eight-hour shift, you're getting nothing for it. You're paying them to go home, essentially. So, what you have in front of you is a couple of different numbers. We have a level service request as far as full-time wages go. That is, the level service request essentially covers all of the contract agreements, longevity and all the other things that were added into the contract. The expanded version of that is all of those things plus three additional officers. Now, the reason that we, as I told you without beating a dead horse, as I told you during the presentation, we're taking a lot of the money from the part-time line because we've made significant adjustments to the contracts that we don't have to fill certain shifts to fund that, those extra positions.
So, part-time's going from approximately 118 to 58?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And that 58 that's left in there is to continue to staff the extra shifts that we need during busy times.
And to provide during the training period for the first year while these people are at the academy.
Every place, every place that we would normally use full-time officers without violating the contract is what that money is for.
Okay.
The overtime, we already touched on. The test project that we did showed a 25 to 30 percent reduction in the amount of overtime spending by adding those extra officers, and you're getting more bang for your buck. And on top of that, let's be honest, the town's not getting any quieter. Okay? With all this stuff going on, we are pushing to a point where we need more officers down the road.
Mike, originally when you became chief, we had spoke about the specials and the part-time. And you still don't have enough of specials and part-timers. The amount of people that you're hiring and the amount of people that, because of their other duties, are walking out really, essentially. And we wanted you to try to get as many specials and part-timers on to take this salary, this overtime salary, and bring it down.
Right.
And right now, the 58,000 you're going down to, part-time and specials, you're going up almost 120 with three new officers.
Correct.
Okay.
Right. Well, I mean, just to explain that, Tom, we have four new people right now being trained. We have no more full-training officers to train them, so the four people that we have on.
No, I understand, it takes time.
And on top of that, we can't just take a part-timer and fill a full-time shift. It's a violation of the contract. So, we can only do so much with those part-timers. If we had 100 of them, we can only use them so much. We are at a point right now with the changes that we've made with how we schedule things, the part-time shifts that were going back to overtime are being filled by all part-time and special now. It's getting to the point where the specials at the bottom of the ladder aren't even getting hours per month because they're getting sucked up by the people above them. That's better than going through the whole list and nobody taking it, which is what the problem we were having before, and then it goes back to overtime and it's 30 bucks out. So, the hiring of more people doesn't change anything if you don't have a place to put them, which is where they're at.
See, originally when we started this, you didn't have a big enough pool to start with, so...
Correct.
So, you do have a big enough pool right now at this point.
Right.
To work them. And...
So, overtime training, there's an increase there, but that is to cover the three additional officers if they're approved. That's, you know, it's not, it's not a ton of money. It's essentially, we're actually doing very good on that. We are, we're actually spending, we're spending the line to pay for the training classes quicker than we are the overtime line, which is a good thing.
In truth, next year it'll be even lower, though, because the training will have occurred for the people going to the...
No, that's ongoing every year.
To the people going to the academy.
This is every year.
This is ongoing every year.
Okay.
This is stuff that I just came from. We had legal updates classes. It's 40 hours of, I'm sorry, 27 hours of in-service training, every single year, on-the-job training for every single officer we had. This is the overtime that covers that.
So, what's the total difference between the requested and the presented?
For level or...
So, you're, yeah, so that's what you're saying, for level services, if that's the budget we tell you you're gonna get.
Yep.
You need 90,190 dollars additional.
I think it's maybe 3,390.
Okay.
And that's taking into consideration the fact that even though we may have, you know, we're looking on a significant cut in the overtime, we're still gonna overrun that line. I think we can cover it short of having to go to the town meeting like we've done the last three years because of the amount we've reduced it, but...
So, then what you're saying next is that if you expand, like we've been talking about for the last few months, your budget increase would only be 48,000 dollars.
And that's what, correct. And that's the first year, because there are actually things that are in that enhanced budget that are a one-year thing.
Mike, yes.
So, that includes the expansion, that includes the police officers agreeing to the changes in the contract, which we proposed, and they're discussing still?
No, we're done.
Ready tonight?
I don't know if I can officially say it, but I was told today that they voted unanimously to pass it today.
Okay.
I know.
All right.
I don't know if their union guys are gonna come after me for saying it, but that's what I was told. So, I know it sounds strange that it would essentially cost more to continue the way we are, but that was the plan that I showed you.
Yes, and that was the problem we always knew, because your contract holds you in. So, by doing the expansion, we actually can save some money over maintaining level services.
I think it's back and forth, because the more people you have, the more people you have to take that overtime that are on regular shifts, so you're actually not going to be using the specials and the part-timers as much.
But there's some management play...
Well, I mean...
There's some it can.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, the problem is this. Make no mistake, 10 months of me being the chief, even if I'm being completely blunt and honest, is absolutely not enough time for me to tell you what the overtime is going to be. This is my first and best attempt, I believe, at, as I said, taming the beast. So, that number that's there, I can tell you with fair amount of accuracy, the amount of shifts that we're, we could give out in overtime, it'll probably be a 30 percent reduction in what we've been giving out. But with the increases in rates of pay and things like that, and all the other things that we're, we did in the contract, the number itself is going to change. It's going to, it's gonna rise, obviously. And you make a good point, Tom. I'm certainly not, I understand what you're saying, but you're right.
Well, I know, I've been looking at it for three years now, and I haven't seen any major changes. And adding three people in my mind right now is really not progress ahead on level servicing this budget right now.
Level servicing the budget is essentially doing the same thing we've been doing.
I know, I know.
Beating your head against a brick wall.
Right.
Yeah.
And I get what you're saying, but I think, I think we're thinking of...
And we made the attempt on the small side with the specials and the part-timers, and the full-timers agreeing to use the specials and the part-timers. So, everybody was kind of working together a little bit to make a little bit of progress, but we just haven't got that far yet.
You know, make a 40,000 dollar reduction in overtime is a pretty good jump, a pretty good start.
We'll take it.
Okay. Any other questions about the budget and what he's presented so far?
Nope.
Anything else you want to say about it?
I don't want to go line by line, I know we've been talking about this.
No, we don't want you to go line by line.
The communication budget, you want me to...
Hit the highlights?
Yeah. Essentially the same thing. There really is not a lot of changes except for the contractual things that we did as far as salary increases, longevity and things like that. The one...
There's more training in dispatch, too, isn't there, no?
There is training.
And it's ongoing like the police?
Yeah, it is, it is. But we all, we do have the advantage of, Mike and I have been working together to try to wrap our head, I mean, this is my first year dealing with it, but we have 911 grants out there that we are involved in, which saves us a ton of money on the training, but there are things, the reason that this, the amount of training as far as this budget goes for salaries is really for things outside of that. It's really not that much. So, the majority of the cost of our training comes through grants, so we save money that way. So, I guess what I would say is, you know, again, just as with the police, it's the salaries, full-time, part-time salaries, and the way that we utilize these people are being changed. We're changing them as much as we can to try to get the most bang for our buck and reduce overtime where we can. This, this overtime line is 20,000 dollars. This doesn't cover technically, by number, what they could possibly make should they take every open shift. But the reason that it's, I'm okay with this number is just simply because of how we've altered the way we give the shifts out, not as big of a concern to me. We're not gonna hit the number, we're just not. So, like I said, I need a little bit more time with that one as well, but we're making straps.
And again, you've got a pool of part-time people where you don't have to bring an officer in.
Correct. We've done the same. I mean, we have, we have people working dual roles right now. We have some of our special officers who are working as dispatchers, they were hired as dispatchers, and then we hired them as cops, and then others that we hired as cops who are doing dual roles as dispatchers, so. And that's really it. I mean, the rest of it, the most, the majority of the communications budget is building expenses as well, electricity, and all the other...
Can I go back to the gas line for a second, please? I mean, gas is half of what we were paying last year for gas, and has the bid come out yet for the state?
No, it should come out next month.
Do we not anticipate gas to be half as much as was last year?
I believe so.
So, we can adjust that.
So, there may be a flexibility in adjusting that number.
Absolutely. And that was one of the things, I actually did speak to David about that, and he told me almost in exactly those words, that we may want to revisit that one.
I see it's less, but...
I did, you know, I talked to Mike about it, he knows more about the boiler replacement than I do. It makes me a little nervous, to be quite honest with you, because I like to get through a winter cycle with those new boilers and C.
Yeah.
But, you know, with costs decreasing and things like that, we can certainly make those adjustments.
Yeah, it was only a month or two when they installed them last year, so you don't have a full season on them.
Correct.
Okay.
It's the same with, honestly, it's the same with the fuel, our fuel gasoline line for the police. We have made significant adjustments in how we handle the gas for the cruisers, and I anticipate being able to reduce that, not only because of the cost of gasoline going down, but also because...
Efficiency of the new vehicles have got to double the mileage.
Efficiency of the vehicles, absolutely. Shutting them off in certain situations when they can be shut off, things like that. None of that was ever addressed. These are things that, you know, I...
Do you know how many years in a row I had to suffer through conversations about police cruiser idle time?
Yeah.
We even have...
I know, I know.
At one...
We talked about the timers, putting timers on the cars.
At one point, when I was the mechanic, we had hour meters under the hood, so we knew how many hours were on it compared to mileage for oil changes, and they used that as a stat for a while.
Yeah, and we, but we have addressed that. That was one of the first things that I did, probably two weeks in. We are seeing significant reductions in the spending in that line, and I anticipate even more, but just like the boiler, I really would like to get through a winter cycle just to make sure, because...
Well, this really isn't a layer cycle.
That's true.
Whatever, winter is anymore.
It's colder than July.
All right. Any other questions?
None.
None, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's good.
Animal control charge, how come it's no charge this year and last year was 250?
Animal control, I think that's...
Expenses. Was, did we not spend it, so you decided?
No change, no change.
Okay, I'm sorry.
We want to keep that 250. Sergeant Cook uses that stuff for my dog food, things that we, you know, we have to keep in for extended periods of time, but things like that.
Yeah, I think that was for, in case you had to bring a dog to the pound or something for a, for a period of time where we had to pay.
Correct. We're working out some other deals, maybe possibly with Amherst, for some other way of doing that. We could almost eliminate that line possibly in the future, but I don't want to incur storage costs in Amherst and reduce this line over here, it doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, their facility has a high rent rate, because...
Well, the...
Doesn't everything in Amherst?
I don't know, I have to pay the utilities on that building, that's why it has a high rent rate.
The lady that we hired as our, one of our new animal control people uses them, I believe, as a storage area, so we're trying to work something out. I'll talk to Stormy and see what we can do.
Chief Mike? Mike, two?
I'm going line by line, just 'cause I want to...
No, 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 no.
Okay, don't worry.
You go by line by line, I got my pencil right here.
Come closer.
That line's zero.
My friend.
So, I'm sure you have the numbers. I just, I gave David the enhanced one. I made a couple of mistakes on the enhanced budget. When I translated the information on this, it didn't get translated onto the enhanced budget. It's not significant, it's more under the week's full-time, so factoring in what his colon is under the overtime.
That's the fire study.
So, I can give you that information, but as far as the level service budget...
I'm sorry, can you hang on? We don't, we don't have your budget.
We don't have a copy of that budget.
So, do we use the...
Just the one you just handed on, is it over the given?
No, I can give them all. I was gonna go through the regular before the enhanced, and give you these if you'd like.
Okay.
The question's right.
Okay, so, the one that's in, the one that's in David's preliminary budget?
This program one, this small, it's, there's three adjustments that I didn't transfer from my level service over to this.
Okay.
But as far as the level service budget, the highlights of it are, we have a new contract for myself, the increases of pay for the full-time fire prevention lieutenant and office manager included in that level service. The, there was, David and I had discussed, because when I originally put the level service together, it was, I believe, a 17 percent increase, so we decided to move it into the enhanced budget. I just wanted to, to make it very clear that one of the increases under level service was including the 19, up to 19 hours a week for the part-timer that we brought onboard that I had spoken to you about, who has started, who's been with us for about three weeks. And so, I had put that into next year's budget. So, the original proposal I put in was 67,000 for temporary wages part-time. However, we changed that, we amended that back to 50,000, and then moved that, we moved it into the enhanced, enhanced budget with some additional information.
All right. We already hired this person, right?
Yes.
So, why wouldn't that be level services? We've already have them on staff, they should be...
No, it was just temporary for this, the end of this budget period.
It wasn't temporary.
But we agreed, we agreed to do it through, yeah.
Yes.
So, it should be...
It should be part of level services.
Should be level services. I, I agree, it should be part of level services.
So, anyway.
You better line.
Okay. So, we've, we've put it into the enhanced budget, which if you want to take a look at, it's a little bit different on the enhanced side. I proposed bringing onboard four part-time staff. So, that increases that line item substantially, 85,500 dollars. So, what I had proposed was adding four part-time positions, 24 hours max. I modeled it after having spoken with the police chief on how he handles his part-time. He has a couple of part-timers. So, no overtime, health benefits if required, two firefighters at a starting pay of 1750 who are firefighter EMT basics and have fire inspector one certification, and then two at 1525 with the EMT basic and inspector one. So, that's in the enhanced budget.
So, if, so if we do the part-time, that's gonna free you, or that's gonna free Lieutenant?
It's gonna enhance Lieutenant McKenna, so, I mean...
So, he'll be able to do more inspections?
They would all be doing inspections.
So...
So, you would be increasing inspections, but the, I'm sorry.
Inspection revenue should potentially go up?
Potentially. I don't want to, I don't want to get into the potential. I'm looking at it based upon NFBA standard and DOT's or OSHA standard, where we are trying to have a truck available during specified hours that are going out and complying with the OSHA standard of two in and two out.
We can't talk out of both sides of our mouth, though. We either gotta say that we're gonna be available for inspections, and the citizens deserve to understand that we're gonna get out there and do those inspections, and there's gonna be revenues generated for that, and we need to get those things done, especially if we're gonna be adding to that. I, I understand what you're saying, that if, first and foremost, they're gonna be on the truck, but if they're not on the truck, we've gotta have them out doing inspections.
Absolutely. There was never a question about that. That's absolutely part of the plan.
Well, then what, what can we anticipate for a revenue generation from that if they were available? We have 135,000 dollars here, we're up 85,000 dollars.
Okay.
We need to offset that somehow, or we need to budget something in. I'm just saying, help us through this.
It's multi-leveled, and again, this has never been done in the town I have, so I can give you the information on what I produced as a single fire prevention officer with all the other things on top of it, but I can tell you that the four firefighters would not only just be doing inspections. There is vehicle maintenance, there's equipment needs to be repaired in the station, there's fire prevention, life safety.
And that stuff saves you money as well.
Yes.
That does save money, but it also, it's providing a service to the community, so the outreach to the seniors, the outreach to the students. Like I said, there's an awful lot more than just doing inspections. Not to say that inspections aren't critical and that we can't increase revenue, but I can't say that that increase in revenue is gonna cover their cost.
No, no, we don't want to say cover the cost. What we want, what we say, what we want to do here is, one, we're meeting the standards for having two people go out in a vehicle. So, we're not sending the chief and the lieutenant out on a great call now. We're sending, most of the time, we're gonna be sending the two part-timers, all right? That's the way you got it kind of set up? Are you gonna reduce the time the chief and the lieutenant and some other people go out in that vehicle?
No, it's to enhance the lieutenant, and if you look at the, I haven't gotten into the salary for the office manager, the standard is for personnel being in a scene. So, as of right now, it's myself, Lieutenant McKenna, and then whoever shows up on call force if we're lucky. So, the hope is, is to, yes, get me more time in the office, but Lieutenant McKenna is still gonna be required to be going to fire calls, not so much the, you know, the motor vehicle accidents and that kind of stuff, but when we have incidences that, you know, fire alarm activations where we don't know what's going on, then that truck is gonna have to roll with...
But there is gonna be some increase in inspections.
Yes.
So, we do need to take kind of a swag.
There's already an increase in inspections with NECC being onboard now.
Okay, so we need to kind of maybe make a swag at what that, another increase might be.
Well, because a lot of, a lot of this comes out of that there's not enough people around during the daytime for call force. So, I mean, so that's basically why I think that this has been introduced from our conversations, that this is to cover what we need to have covered during the daytime.
This is, this is also phase one. There's more, there is more coming. You know, we're in the process, and I've been asked to present on the MRI report, we're in the process of applying for a safer grant, a staffing, a staffing grant. However, we were concerned of requesting full-time staffing through the town, because if we did that, we wouldn't be able to utilize that funding for, to cover those positions. So, ultimately, you know, there's, there's an awful lot of stuff that's going into this plan with not a lot of time to do it during the day because we're going out the door all the time. Calls are up, you've seen, seen the numbers. I've made it very clear on my philosophy and the philosophy of the department on the calls that we have to go to. So, this is kind of an initial attempt to start working towards that full-time department with a, you know, a fire-based ambulance service, if the numbers, and I understand all the information has to come out on that.
Mike, I know, I asked you for this information, the fire calls to the ambulance calls, and you're, you said you had them.
Yes.
I'd really like to see that ratio.
Fire calls to ambulance calls.
Yeah. How many actual fire calls do we have, and how many actual ambulance calls do we have? Because somewhere down the road, whoever is in here is probably going to look at the full-time fire department and EMTs and look at an ambulance service for the town. I'm still open to that suggestion. I know some of the other people on the board aren't, but it's an option out there, and I see ambulance services... But it's an option out there, and I see ambulance services in a lot of towns and cities that don't have ambulances and still have full-time fire departments.
So, we've interrupted you. Go ahead and keep going through your budget.
Okay. Uh, what else? So, the communication budget is, it combines both the fire department and PD under one service agreement. However, we do have equipment that is coming off of warranty. This includes the dispatch center console. So, that's based upon an estimated price from our, our service provider through town communications. So, that's about a thousand dollar increase.
What line items is that?
That's the communication radio mains over there, fifty-two forty-two.
Okay.
Emergency medical supplies, I requested in FY sixteen, and it was remained, it remained the same. So, the fire department handles the cost of maintaining our AEDs, first aid equipment. We, we, we get, whenever we have the opportunity to, if we do something, we get one-for-one exchange with the ambulance service. However, batteries expire, the fibrillator pads expire, we don't get replacement for that. So, there's a significant cost on top of the fact that we have right currently, and it is in our capital plan. And also, the fire association will be presenting to you the potential of bringing in some new AEDs. However, you know, the, the repairs on it can be pricey as well. So, that's the main portion of that under emergency medical supplies.
What part of this budget, what line items are you gonna submit to the capital planning?
For what?
With funding.
None of these. This is my, this is a regular budget.
So, none of these items meet the capital threshold, is what you're saying?
Telephone cable and internet. In two thousand sixteen, we requested sixty-one hundred, which was an actual cost for cable, internet, phone, and cellphones. It was voted at four thousand, so I'm requesting that. With everything that I've added up and multiplied by twelve, that's the price that it comes to. So, I'm asking this year for it to be increased to what was requested in the two thousand and sixteen budget.
Why so much? I mean, why is it so high at sixty-five hundred?
Well, that's the cost of the phones in the department, which have, have improved. We have, we have done some work with, Mike has done some work with Verizon on that, but that's our cellphones, that's our, the iPads for inspections, that's internet cable, and that's basically what the cost is times twelve.
It's five hundred a month. Okay. A little over.
We actually, I actually put together a group where I had all the departments to come in, and we evaluated the Verizon wireless plan that we had. We brought the schools in, the folks from the town hall to see if we bundled all this. And the price actually ended up being a little bit more expensive. So, we have attempted to do the cost savings on this, but that's what we came up with.
But we added more phones, too. That was the other issue. We took a couple of phones out. We had to add some. So, it, it is a better, entire, better package all around.
It's not, my, my budget does not cover Tim's phone, or the plumbing inspector's phone, or things like that. This is strictly part of the department. The engine ladder testing and maintenance, I wish I had a crystal ball to tell you, but this year, our engine one, which is a two thousand and one, incurred close to fourteen thousand dollars worth of repairs on the ladder. And it's not something that Brian can do. This is something that's done by a certified Seagraves dealer. These trucks are, run a lot. We have a lot of calls. They get used a lot. So, that's the average. That's what I've come up with. I can tell you this year that we are already in a negative, and I have not even been able to inspect our nineteen eighty-seven engine two, which is normally a five to eight thousand dollar one.
That, uh, emergency broadcast, that's reverse nine-one-one?
It's actually, yes, it's code rent, yes.
That's every year of that fee?
Correct. Uniforms stay at the scene. The fire supplies, the PPE. We have, in an effort not to have to come to the town and ask for ninety-eight thousand dollars, or whatever the request was, to update the personal protective equipment for our firefighters, we've put it into our annual budget. They're replacing up to five pieces of full turnout gear. We are on a good cycle now, where all firefighters minus two have all, they're all within the ten-year cycle. You're supposed to, you have to retire the gear with, after ten years. The state won't even allow you to train on their fire ground with anything that's over ten years. Never mind the abuse it takes to begin with. So, you're probably looking at a five to seven-year cycle on it. So, we, we are keeping up with that and maintaining it. That also includes, includes gloves and helmets and boots, because those wear out as well. So, that's a very, that's an accurate figure. Unfortunately, there's a three percent increase, having spoken with the distributor who handles our type of equipment.
That, back to that, reverse nine-one-one, for a second. Is that the fire department's, or is that dispatch?
It's emergency management and.
Okay, so it's the whole, police, fire, and dispatch? Okay.
Basically, it's to notify the community.
Well, I'm just saying, could that be put into the dispatch, dispatch budget, rather than the fire department?
It's under the emergency management budget.
Okay.
Because it's strict, there's very strict guidelines on what it's being used for. I can tell you that we've actually, we've found some details on it, where Mike is gonna be able to have some cost savings on how he calls out for his backfill?
Yeah. All, all of our details go on a texting system now, which we encourage our school, we're actually able to cut that from our budget by using this system.
Okay.
How does that one vary from the one that's used by the school?
Yeah, it's, it, it doesn't vary very much, but you can't, you can't, I can't use our system to notify schools, and the schools can't utilize it for us to use it for emergency. There's very strict guidelines on what you can use it for.
There's our IT problem.
Five grand turns into ten.
Yeah.
They got that special codes and things like that to be able to even send these messages out.
So, the computer hardware purchase, the station smarts, which we received state funding for, the state funding that covered two years of that is, is up this year. So, that includes that increase on that system. That's for our fire reporting, that's for inspection reports, and it's a very robust system that we're, it's gonna take us a while to build it out. But it's something that we, we really, we really need to have. We were normally, when John was on the department, it was Firepoint software, which was just about as expensive. I know Mike's IMC program is ten thousand dollars a year, he was saying. So, it's expensive for these, these systems for some reason.
Did, did this take into account the IT consultant's report?
It was, it was, that information was given to the IT folks of what we have.
But, but he went through and he did, or they did, like, priority read items. Fire department had some items in there. Who says?
This is actually not hardware. This is actually service agreement for the software.
Yes, right, service agreement for the software. Yes, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that's about, that's about it for the big increases.
All right. Any other questions for the fire? So, I think for the fire, I think we should take the person that we added to this, that we added this year, that needs to go with level services.
Yeah.
I agree with that.
We'll put that in.
So, we need to adjust that, and then we need to do, take a little estimate of what we think the increase will be in inspections.
Revenue.
By adding the, the enhanced side to this plan, just so we know what we, just what we think we might be able to get out of it.
Yeah, one inspection's only, it's thirty thousand dollars. So, I mean, as we, some number goes over.
Are you around tomorrow? You can work on all those issues.
Okay.
So, just a further discussion, I, I was talking with other people regarding communities and fundings of fire departments in that when a fire truck is, is sent to a scene, and it is a non-town person that's involved with the fire truck being sent to it, many communities will charge the insurance of the incident, okay? Now, we don't have the manpower, the staff by any means, in order to accomplish that at this point in time. But I'd like to look at that for the future to see if that is something that we should be doing.
It's probably something more of the information's already on the police department's side that you have to get that.
Which kind of incidents are you talking about?
Just, just for a car accident or something.
Car accident when a fire truck is, is sent.
To a motor vehicle accident?
To a motor vehicle.
We have that, we have that in place, but Northampton's even dropped out of it, because there's, they were having too many issues with collecting. Folks weren't paying it, and.
I think that's what the point is making, is like, you gotta chase people around, so you need the staff at the door.
I, I just wanna look into it. I think that we, we should identify and see whether or not it's an option. Because people deserve to know whether or not this is possible. I am not, under any circumstances, suggesting that a person-based accident down at Hadley ever get a bill from our fire department. But if there's incidents that we're having, and there's, the fire trucks being dispatched, we had a hell of an accident that happened just the other day, where you guys were on site for nine hours, okay? Down here at the bike shop, where, you know, you guys had to be there for, you know, half the night. And I think that there should be a charge incurred for that, and I don't think that's unfair. And I understand through somebody in town who's an insurance agent, who said that, you know, this is a standard policy that many municipalities do. Now, it's a huge pain, because it's, it's a specialty, and I understand that. But a lot of smaller departments will sub that out, the, the collection agency aspect of it for a percentage, whatever their percentage is.
Exactly.
And I think we should look at that.
And since you brought it up. Exactly. And since you brought it up, you're gonna have the same issues with an ambulance service if you start on.
So, is, do we have more public safety?
I didn't realize.
Do you want to, do yours when you do the town hall?
I don't think he's prepared tonight.
All right, we'll do it.
I apologize.
That's fine.
Mine's pretty simple anyways.
Well, we'll wait.
Inspections are on forward tonight.
Thanks, guys.
It's in the agenda for tonight, but it's actually in the schedule for March something.
Yeah, it would be with the finance plan.
That's the finest, I guess.
I think we'd be remiss tonight if we didn't say a thank you to both our chiefs that are here this evening for the great job they did for the Huckwitz dedication that occurred on Saturday as well. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Actually, are you guys staying for the, for the?
There was a.
Are you guys gonna stay for the discussion about the contracts?
Uh, no, I actually spoke with David, because they're settling. He didn't think, you needed us here, but if you need us.
Nope.
You're talking about the dispatch contract?
Yeah.
Exactly.
What about the emergency management?
The dispatch one?
The, oh, the EMD?
Oh, so this is, you're talking about the, the enhanced medical dispatch, the contract with the town of Amherst. So, we, we have a contract with the, the town of Amherst, an agreement with the town of Amherst for them to provide emergency medical dispatch services, and we pay for that through, pass-through grant. And we, we have an agreement that we have to renew annually. And unfortunately, with the events surrounding Mr. Masanti, that didn't happen. So, now we're bringing that to the table for us, to renew that agreement.
So, the state pays the fifteen thousand dollars right now? And then we pay that on to the town of Amherst to provide that service?
Yeah.
Which is basically a dispatcher who stays on the phone when there's a emergent, that medical call.
That walks up through CPR.
Yep. Any questions about that?
Yeah, what happens if the grant goes away? We're on the hook for fifteen grand.
Yeah.
So, we're required to have the service.
It's under the understanding, this is a mandate.
It is.
Is it a mandate?
Well, fifteen thousand dollars in and of itself isn't a mandate.
So, the.
Someone has to provide.
Someone must provide the service.
No.
The way that we have it set up right now.
You gotta, yeah, you gotta through dispatch, that you just.
Is it because they, they're dispatching the ambulance?
No, I think this is different. This is strictly for EMD. This is for the medical dispatching. I'm not.
Yeah, emergency medical dispatch.
Intramunicipal agreement.
So.
My, my basic understanding of it is that it's to train the Amherst dispatchers to walk someone through CPR until the ambulance arrives.
And they provide that service to us.
Right. In exchange for the cost. And if the grant does go away, I don't have an answer for it. Essentially, what we'll have to do is add to our communications budget and get our own people trained in that, which is also gonna require impact bargaining and a change in the contract.
And probably having two dispatchers on shift.
That is, yes. That's my understanding, is that you gotta, you have to have two, because if someone is walking someone through CPR, they cannot be answering any, they cannot be doing any other task.
So, we're happy, we're happy to look into other alternatives. I think, Mr. Devine, you raised some questions about whether this is the most advantageous for the town of Hadley. I think I recommend that for this current fiscal year, that we take care of this, this agreement with the understanding that for FY seventeen, we can look into alternatives and report back to the board.
Okay.
So, moved.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, I think that's all the police and fire things for tonight?
I had a review of the AMRI report, but we can, it's up to you.
I'm gonna like or not.
That's not on the agenda.
Yeah.
Yes.
It's not good, though.
You probably don't wanna hear it, so.
Why don't we reschedule that?
Would that be okay with you, Mike?
Let's see, that's reschedule number four or five?
Sure. Would it be okay if I shipped you all a draft of an initial look at it?
Yes.
I, I think the theory there was that before we make any final budget decisions, it would be helpful to know, put it in the context of that report, so that's why we had asked for it.
Yes, although it would've been better to put it actually as an item on the agenda, instead of rolling it in with the budget discussion. Because it's kinda hidden in the budget discussion.
Can I just briefly summarize before we go, we go into the, we have, I know, David and I have discussed it, normally a study like that, you don't, it can take years. We've really chipped away at an awful lot of items on this.
Absolutely.
So, it's pretty substantial. We, do we still have a long way to go out of the, what, hundred and sixty-five recommendations? But we've actually implemented quite a bit.
That's good, and we wanna hear about that.
Okay.
So, thank you. So, treasurer, are you here for?
We are here for five-three, for land, and also in building, municipal building committees, here on that, too.
Yeah, get the other guy.
Go link them up.
Okay, so.
It's, and also Route nine, the water lines, Dave Isenthal, from Keenback, who everything then bonds to the borrowing, so five-three and five-seven.
So, why don't we just go ahead and start with five-three, Chairman? We were talking about this earlier, and we stopped in the middle of it, so.
Okay, so can I make my plea about the, are we going to that one now?
Yes.
Okay.
Please.
Well, I, I think that as a board, we need to talk about the roles and responsibilities of the OPM. And I don't think, I don't feel like we've had adequate conversation about that. Because I looked at the information that Dave Waskevitz forwarded today from the state, and I just tried to line that up with the draft, and it seems like there's, there's a lot of room for interpretation on the role. So, we should probably talk about that.
All right.
No?
So, before we talk about that, why don't we talk about the borrowing part? Do you wanna go ahead and?
So, there are two land articles now that are being presented on the annual town media report. The municipal building committee submitted a land, an article to purchase land in North Hadley. And the select board is working on a draft RFP for purchase of land in central Hadley. Mr. Isenthal took a look at the requirements for, where this is gonna have to be a borrowing article. And so, we brought Mr. Isenthal in in order to talk about the setup for the borrowing. And it turns out that there's a number of things that we have to take into account briefly that were. there's a number of things that we have to take into account, um, briefly, that we're going to need a preliminary legal opinion from bond counsel, which is gonna take time to do. And I think that you said that between now and Labor Day, uh, would be an appropriate timeframe for us to, to make that work. Uh, I'm gonna turn it over to you, because you're looking increasingly concerned.
No, I'm not concerned at all. Mr. Chairman, thank you. Um, as David said, uh, we, uh, I found treasurer, David and I had a conversation the other day. We were talking about a number of, uh, issues that the town may, uh, where the town may be borrowing in the near future, maybe authorize a new borrowing in the near future. And, uh, I, I just pointed out that, um, the land purchase, I mean, the, the timing can be critical and, uh, not to, uh, make it, make this the overriding consideration with, uh, with a, with a land purchase, but that, uh, before treasurer and this board can borrow on behalf of the town, um, there would be, and, uh, there would need to be a preliminary legal opinion from the town's bond council, which is Lockwood LLP. And, um, they would be reviewing the proceedings, including a debt exclusion vote if such is taken. Uh, and also for land purchase, uh, as, um, Mr. Nixon and Mrs. Anderson and I were talking, were discussing, um, there could be potential tax exemption issues, uh, as far as ma- making sure we, the bond counsel will wanna do due diligence on the use of the land. Uh, I'm not coming to you to say that there is and are any issues, but, um, they would wanna at least review any potential private activities that could compromise the tax exemption of a borrow. So, that's, and those are the issues that I-
Why would we be talking about private activities?
Well, um, they may be things that you wouldn't even suspect would be private activities. Uh, and I'll give you an example. If, um, the town were to buy some land and build a building and decide to put some solar panels on the roof, depending on the contract that the town would have for those solar panels, or mid turbine, say, um, that could be considered under the Internal Revenue Code, private activity that could, uh, render the borrowing not tax exempt in the extreme case.
Could affect a loan, yeah.
So, um, or another, I, another possibility is that they kind of build a building and leased out space, say, to a daycare center. Um, that could be something that would compromise the tax exemption of borrowing. Now, we're, we are not bond counsel, we're the financial advisors to the town. Um, so, my role really is just to raise the issues to your awareness and make sure that if possible, that, uh, with any decision, uh, to proceed with a land purchase, that time be built in to allow this kind of, um, bond counsel to review, uh, these issues.
Do you have a suggestion as to time?
So, uh, the, for both these, for either or both these land purchase articles, we, we need to do this as a debt exclusion. We don't have the capacity within our budget to assume debt within, within the levy, so we need to have the town meeting vote on May fifth, and then by law, no later than September fifteenth, have a ballot vote. Uh, Labor Day is when the preliminary bond decision can be, uh, preliminary legal decision from bond counsel can be delivered. So, we'd be looking at, uh, ballot questions sometime in mid-September.
Well, David, in self due respect, uh, part of what bond counsel's gonna wanna review is, are the debt exclusion proceedings? They'll wanna review that to make sure that that is also-
So, it has to happen first. We won't get the bond counsel's opinion until we've had the ballot.
Thank you for helping me to get the process straight.
So, it's a chicken and egg thing. We have to have the chicken, or we have to have the property first and a vote to actually, let's give us a debt exclusion, and then we can go through the other part.
Not necessarily, but the, um, I think that, uh, and, and this really would be a matter of, of reasonable expectations ahead of a borrowing, as far as what the land was gonna be used for. And, uh, I, I mean, at this point, there may be, if you're, all you're doing is buying a par- a parcel of vacant land, uh, that you might not be as constrained as you might be as if you were buying a building where you had some, a definite idea as to how the building was going to be used. All I'm saying is that the, uh, bond counsel's role is twofold. They review the proceedings at town meeting and the, and the voters, where there's a debt exclusion vote, and they also make sure that any borrowings, uh, are, they look at the tax exemption to make sure you can enjoy, uh, as a municipality, uh, tax exemption.
So, really, I mean, we need to know what we're getting into, what we're buying, if we're gonna possibly do it. So, we need to know, is it land, is it a building, what we're gonna use it for? And then, that would, the price of that would tell us what we're gonna put on the bond, or on the warrant article. And then you have to have build-in time at the end of that before you close to make sure, and before you vote on the actual, so that's what you're all you're saying right now, right?
Right. I mean, that, they have to be in between when the authorization happens, when debt exclusion vote happens, and when the town and the seller, uh, come to the table and close on the-
So, you're-
On the purchase sale, there, uh, there needs to be a legal process to make sure that the town, but the treasurer and you have the legal authority to borrow.
So, you're telling us it takes ninety days for that to be, be done?
Well, I think that, you know, we were talking about, uh, summer, you know, being summer, that, that it's possible it could get maybe a little bit, um, shortened, but really you would wanna allow some time to, um, allow that process to unfold, um, rather than thinking that you could close within a very short period of time after a debt exclusion, for example.
I get that.
That's good information to have.
I thought it was, it's interesting to, because we're always looking for how we can increase our revenues and find other sources of revenue. And, uh, we need to be careful about that, I guess, when we're, when we're into a borrowing, that we don't get into a borrowing that was completely tax exempt for taxes and purposes, and then get an idea of what we wanna do. I think the idea of solar panels and making some money off it is very intriguing. If we're going to be thinking like that during, during the time of the loan, we should think about it right now. And, um, as we were talking about with, with David, it's not that we're restricted from doing that, we just need to be clear about that upfront, and sometimes it's worthwhile to have a section of it be not tax exempt. Maybe we'll still come out ahead, but whatever our intentions are going into it, we have to be clear about it, and we have to hold to that during the, for the duration of the borrowing, of the kind of-
Okay, can we modify it after we buy the piece of property and change in our decision-making process?
Yeah.
Because I don't think many people were thinking about solar panels six years ago, when they may have entered into SRFs for thirty-five year or thirty-year, twenty-year plans.
Right.
And now have decided to go back and revisit that. Is that, can it be modified?
It's a, it's a reasonable expectation as of the town, well, a couple of things. And I'll point out, I'm not a tax attorney, although I sometimes joke that I play one on TV. Um, so, um, the, the issue there is that, I mean, if the town really doesn't have any clear expectation, and I think this is, I'll really give the caveat that this is something that the real tax lawyers need to review. But, if you are just buying a piece of land and you don't have any expectation at the time you borrow, that there's going to be-
Any private usage.
Any private usage, that's not a problem. It's as you go along, if you get to a bond issue, I mean, there, there are a couple of points where you would need to worry about this. If the, uh, you get to the bond issue and you really think, well, we think we're gonna put solar panels on this, at least what you wanna do is you wanna have the treasurer or the town administrator, um, provide whatever contracts are, are gonna be, um, executed or whatever expectation that the town has relative to, uh, to these, to these items. Now, in the extreme case, let's say that the town buys the land and builds a building with every intention, or actually does use the building for a number of years as a municipal facility, but for whatever reason, say, seven years down the road, the, the town decides to sell the building. Uh, in that case, the town, as part of its post-issue, its compliance, would need to talk to us, talk to bond counsel about remedial measures in order to, uh, retain tax exemption on the bonds. Any, any sale proceeds, for example, might need to, and this is again, bond, bond counsel would say exactly how this would unfold, but it's possible that any sale proceeds would be, have to be used to, uh, retire, uh, outstanding, uh, bonds that were issued for-
For debt, or-
Build, uh, purchase and build the facility.
I think the biggest issue here was, through all the conversations with the building committee and, and the board, was we, we have park and rec up in the existing building now along with fire. And if we were to build fire first and at some point build park and rec on the same piece of property, they're still both tax exempt.
So, that wouldn't affect it?
It's really just, what I'm talking about is just giving time between the authorization by town meeting, by the voters, and proceeding to a closing to allow bond counsel to do its diligence on proceedings themselves for making sure that everything is in order, but also to ask the kind of questions. I mean, it may be that the answers are very straightforward, as you are indicating, and so there's no issue, but-
Well, this was just conversation we had, so I threw it out there.
Right. But I'm just saying, if you, if you know, if the answers are straightforward like that, that there's, these can be answered pretty quickly, but we wanna allow enough time to bond counsel to address these issues.
So, is-
Yeah, um, since it, this take a while for bond counsel to review, and the ballot vote is one of the items they reviewed, it sounds like David, we're gonna want to schedule the ballot, um, and obviously work with the town, or the registrars to get this as quickly as possible after town meeting, right? Because it's the review process that takes time. So, we want, we, we wanna have our paperwork lined up and in as early as possible so that they have time to-
There may be a way of short, shortening that up, but you need at least thirty-five days from the town meeting in order to register the voters.
Right. Before school gets out, we'd be smart.
So, and the schedule you lay down are, are by time, are agenda here, is that taken into account?
No, no, apparently that's different, so we'll, we'll prepare a different schedule then.
Okay. Great. Any other questions about this?
No, it's very helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry you had to wait so long.
But wait, there's more.
There's more. So, um, so let's, so let's just go ahead and just talk about the RFPs in general for a minute. So, the schedule we have here is early March release, which we still can do. Um, mid-April, we're gonna return the RFPs and award, but really not going to award until after town meeting vote. So, it's like mid-April to July, w- July something, because, because of town meeting, the money won't be appropriated until sometime after that. So, that, that schedule kinda needs to be changed a little bit too.
Yep.
Alright. And then, so we need to put in, we have bond counsel review next, that in there.
You know, along with that, through this budgetary process, we need those two departments to continue their budget as planned also.
Well, let's just finish this here in front of us.
Yeah. Um, so, that's the overall schedule. And then, so, the next thing is the actual, do you want, do you wanna talk about the actual RFP and RFQ?
We already did an RFP on it.
Well, the RFP is the one we're gonna do for land and the center of town. So, we, that was, David submitted that to us. I made a couple of comments on it. Does anybody else have any comments on it? Okay, so-
We got some comments from-
Yeah, it was a discussion.
Are you talking about these, land purchase in the center of town?
The center of town.
Yeah, we did, uh, pass on some suggestions in regards to, um, the project description. Um, we're not getting back information if, if what possible changes occurred, but I did look onto your, um, your, what's that called, doc?
Board docs.
Board docs.
Board docs. And it didn't seem like, uh, the, the changes to the, uh, project description had been done.
Incorporated.
Yeah. So, there were some very minor things. Uh, the way the project was described was more of a pie shape, and we kinda wanted to take out, we just made a suggestion, take out the, um, the depth and the rear dimension, and just leave the front dimension and the overall size. So, we had just some minor things like that that we wanted to incorporate on that.
Okay.
Get a chance to review those? Is there any problem with incorporating those?
No, and I have those, uh, suggestions.
Excellent.
So, why don't we, we have these all, we'll bring them back next meeting and vote to release it if we're all set with it, so.
You, you're complete with those now? If, nothing came out of last night's meeting to be added, correct?
Uh, for the land?
Correct.
No, we had made those suggestions a while ago. We, we just wanted to make sure that they were incorporated.
And nothing last night changed that?
Well, we didn't discuss it, because we haven't seen an updated version of it, so there's nothing to discuss.
And after we get it updated, we could fuse forward it to them, so.
We have a meeting next week, so we can look at it Tuesday.
Excellent.
Okay.
But the municipal building committee did submit another article for, uh, land purchase in north, uh, part of Hadley, so we would have to issue an RFP for that, which-
Okay, so let's stay on this one for now.
Okay, alright.
Let's not wander.
Got it.
We've wandered a lot tonight. It's like being in, in New Zealand.
Happy wandering.
Okay, so, the RFQ for the OPM. So, we've all seen that. Molly has some, some questions that came from Mr. Waskevitz. Um, we can kinda put those together and pull them together and review a little bit?
I haven't seen that, but I just got one question. Why are we going for an OPM when we don't even have anything to build yet for probably a year?
Well, because the state law says you have to have your OPM before you go out for a builder, for a designer. So, we have to line up somebody to do this.
It's a chicken and the egg.
Yeah.
It's no cost to you, though, right?
Well, that's what I mean. Is, is this gonna cost us in the meantime, having this person on board?
No, once we bring the-
Or is it gonna be an on-call thing like we did?
No, once you bring the OPM on board, the OPM has to be involved in your, um, RFQ for your designer. So, you do start incurring a cost for the OPM.
That's all the information you just sent us?
Yeah.
I, I just opened my email. I didn't get a chance to read it.
But that's just to design a spec, so you've made the decision to go forward and do that point. Not until then, though.
Correct. And then if we, anytime we decide we're not going forward, then we don't pay, I mean, if, if we decide this whole thing, we get a town meeting, and everyone says, no, we're not doing any of this stuff?
It's all right.
We're done. We don't pay any money to anybody. We just need to have the process done and have the people lined up and the numbers lined up, so we can say this is what it's gonna cost. Okay. I, I just wanna clarify. I sent out the-
Thank you.
The guidelines for, uh, getting an OPM in position. Um, some of my comments last night was based on an older version of what I had already seen, but I just recently saw a more updated version, so I think the current version is a little more in line with what I would expect for an OPM to be requested to do. So, I think that's on the right track. It just, once again, would be good to see the final draft, so we know what you're seeing, so that when you're approving it, you know that we've approved it and, you know, that kinda thing.
David, the one you forwarded to us is the new or the old?
I didn't afford any, I didn't forward the RFQ, I just forwarded the guidelines.
The guidelines.
The guidelines are correct.
Is that the recent most, is that the guidelines you want us to adhere to or to look at, or is there a new set?
I don't know if it's the most recent. It's two thousand and four. They came out the same time that the whole requirement for the OPM apparently came out. It was just the longer version.
One big suggestion is we need to put revision or date on any, anything that gets changed, because there's no dates, there's no revisions. So, right now, quite honestly, we don't know which is the latest addition right now. So, there's been modifications to some of these things, but there's no dates on them. So, um, we're, we are, also are getting very confused. The only place that I'm assuming that is the latest version is on your, on, on your computers.
That's the latest version.
That's a good assumption.
That's the latest version.
And that, that's the only way, because, but there's nothing here to say, say what.
But we don't know what you, you see right now.
Yeah.
We have no idea. We see lots of things.
So, a date on these things would be advantageous.
So, can I ask my overarching question here?
Yep.
Okay, so, I guess the biggest question I had, um, in this one, it talks about the scope of services, talks about the OPM. of services, talks about the OPM being responsible, blah, 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 and then it goes through the initial phase, and, and everywhere in here it refers to the select board. So, based on my reading of this, the way it's written currently, the OPM would be interacting directly with the select board?
That's probably the easiest way to do it, because the other thing we have to decide is the select board, is whether we want to have a building committee that guides the OPM, and that we haven't talked about that.
That's my point. I think we need to talk about that.
I mean, the only thing I would say is, if we put this out, is we could probably say, a select board, are there designees?
Yeah.
That's exactly what I was going to suggest.
And we've already got a building committee there that's given us all this information anyway.
Yes.
Because we just mentioned on the last part of the, that section.
Because we do have to decide, there's a, there's a lot of things we have to decide as this moves forward, but these are things we can decide as we're advertising for things, so we don't have to hold up to make the decision.
It doesn't have anything to do with the qualifications of the OPM?
No, I just wanted to make sure that we're not locking, locking in a structure that we may not be able to adhere to or choose not to adhere to by virtue of this.
Because anytime we say select board, then we as a select board can vote to delegate it out, which is kind of one of the great things of being a select board.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just typically used to the language arts delegate. David, did you see that's in here? I didn't, I didn't see a delegation in here.
Yeah, I'll have to find it for you, I don't remember what section.
Okay.
So, but just one comment also, you know, we spent a lot of time in looking at these buildings and everything, I think it would be very beneficial to whoever is the OPM if we are involved in the process, because we are knowledgeable about a lot of the needs of these buildings, and we can help direct, we know what's been going on, so we'd like to have a part of that in some, even if it's just a subcommittee of that, but it's.
I couldn't agree more.
You know, it's just that we're going to be reinventing the wheel if we have to go back to this left board coming up and negotiating with the OPM, as opposed to having us involved, who already been down the trail.
So as, as I was reading it, the OPM, it didn't preclude you being involved, because the OPM and the, and the RFQ we have now will gather information, review information. I see you as preparing the information, and you could present it and do it any way you want to. So I don't see that as, we didn't say that you couldn't do it, so I saw, I saw that as an open-ended, so we could add it in and be more specific, or we can leave it a little more open-ended, it's up to.
Right, but we, I think we just have to be careful, though, because we also have municipal employees on the group right now.
We do, well, for the municipal building committee, we do, yes.
Yeah, that's what I mean, and two of them are inspectors.
For the municipal building, yes.
That's what I'm saying, so, but, so, no offense, but I mean, we, we need to be very careful of this. It can't, I don't think it can be the.
I think we're talking about, we're talking about two things, I think, now, because when we decide if we're going to have a building committee to move the projects forward, then we do need to talk about the membership of that committee.
Mm-hmm.
But when the OPM is gathering information, that's already been prepared, going to the municipal building committee is perfectly what they should do, to seek out that information.
They've already got that legwork done.
Well, the library, for instance, when we had the high, the OPM was hired, or we had the RF two go out, it often referred to the design and planning committee as a reference that they would be dealing with, or a group they would be dealing with. It wasn't strictly the trustees and the select board, so it's just.
I think they actually chose that before they actually said, submitted it, so that's what I understood. They just, they decided to have that committee.
I think that was considered best practice by the state.
Yeah.
As part of the.
Anything else on the OPM that we need to include in the proposal?
So we'll take all this stuff together, swish it around, try to get something back out by Friday, and send it to everybody, and go from there.
Date it and sign off on it, or don't sign off on it, but let's get back.
I have a question on the timing, is the OPM, I, is it going to be in place before the land purchases?
No, the OPM has to be in place.
So it's part of the same.
Before a one and a half million dollars.
So it's going to go on the spring town meeting as well, but as a separate article?
Yes.
All right, so if, unless there's other borrowing articles, I mean, we don't want to have, well, we'll have to talk about, that maybe it won't be a borrowing article, it could be a borrowing article, but it's not going to wait for the land purchase.
As soon as, as soon as the select board closed the warrant tonight, I will give you a copy of everything that I have. There's, there's a powerful amount of borrowing that we're going to have to talk about, and I think it might tip a million dollars.
Oh, okay, all right.
And that's, you're still here to talk about the water line eventually, or?
Yes.
Okay, so are we done with item five point three?
Yeah, just one, Molly was asking about where it mentions another committee being designated or being involved.
Mm-hmm.
It's not until the construction phase, and it's number six.
Yeah, C six.
So that's towards the tail end of that.
It's actually recommended to do it sooner.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, do we actually have to close the warrant tonight?
So long as it's open, people can continue to submit, you have thirty-one articles.
Geez.
Well, can I, can I just bring?
Make it easy, just vote to close, and then we can review the warrant at the next meeting.
Is anyone okay with that?
I, I'm okay with that, but one of the, I mean, a huge thing that we need to talk about is this IT report. And we screamed and screamed, and we finally got it, and it's like really good stuff in there.
Do that tonight?
No, but I want to make sure that we don't close and then, you know, we may need to.
We can always open and put articles in.
Exactly.
So you have, you have a number of capital articles, where this, the recommendations of the technology plan can be inserted there without the technical warrant.
I'll make a motion, we close the warrant.
Second.
Any more discussion?
We're going to need an all-day Saturday meeting.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so let's jump down to Route nine water line projects right now.
A little bit of history, we applied to the state, the Mass Department of Transportation is going to widen Route nine from Wally Street to about four hundred feet east of the intersection of Route forty-seven, about where the pharmacy is right now. In coordination with that Mass DOT project, we're going to replace the one-hundred-year-old water lines underneath there. We applied last August for an SRF, a state revolving fund, loan for this project, we were told no. So at, at the special town meeting of October, we've authorized borrowing for three hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars to be paid by water rates. Senator Rosenberg was able to secure for us after we were told that we were ineligible for the SRF loan, N-S-R-F loan, and the bids came back favorably. The bid for our portion of the work is two hundred and seventeen thousand, two hundred and ten dollars. Senator Rosenberg was able to get, secure for us up to three hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars of the SRF loan program. We're scrambling a little bit, this is a, a unique situation where we have received an award without having done a lot of the pre-qualifying legwork, so we're working with Senator Rosenberg's office and the Department of Environmental Protection to jump through the hoops that we need to do for there. David Eisenthal was good enough to give us some feedback as to whether the SRF loan program for a ten-year borrowing would be as advantageous, less advantageous, more advantageous than the authorization that we secured at the, at the October town meeting. So you have some information for us?
Yes, and I, Mr. Nixon, I submitted this to the board. The answer is that under current market conditions, and assuming a bond issue that would take, that would finance a number of currently authorized town projects with a total amount of about one point two million dollars, financing the, this piece through that bond issue would be about, at a similar economic cost to the, to the SRF. The issue is that bond rates change much more, with much more frequency and amplitude than the SRF loans. The SRF is, will, will lend money at two percent, there are some costs, ongoing costs with the SRF, but essentially.
It stays fixed, yeah.
But it's essentially a two percent interest rate on the loan, and that does not change. So, the, I think that the idea of protecting the downside would be going with the, assuming, and this did assume a ten-year term, many of the SRF loans can be done over twenty, and clearly, if we were looking at a twenty-year term, the SRF would be even more to the town's advantage. I will say that if the town did have other projects that, or I should take it back, I would say, one of the reasons that, the, for the comparable economic impact was that we would be looking at a relatively small bond issue and some relatively high costs of issuance for that bond issue. If you were looking at doing a larger bond issue, say if the size that this, that the town did in the fall of twenty fourteen, the results might have been a little bit different. But given where the town is at, it is, the thought is that protecting the downside would argue in favor of going with the SRF loan.
Okay, so what do we need to do to?
So as I said, we're in a situation where we've, we've received a gift from Senator Rosenberg that we weren't expecting. There's a number of hoops that we have to jump through, so if the board could take a vote tonight to authorize the chair to execute any and all documents necessary in order for us to implement this SRF loan program for the Route nine water line project, that would be good.
So moved.
Second.
Any more discussion?
Yeah, I got a comment.
Go ahead.
Way back when, when I said we should have went all the way to East Street with the nineteen oh four water main, and you were all against it, here's a perfect example where this SRF fund could have been borrowed at two percent and the job completed down Route nine.
But they weren't widening the road at that time either.
It doesn't matter, it's still a nineteen oh four water main, Joyce, and you're still arguing about it.
All right.
And it's going to cost us twice as much.
I'm not arguing about it, it needs to be done.
All right, there's a motion, and a second. All those in favor of going after the SRF loan?
Aye.
Aye.
Upstand.
Aye. Okay, so we'll do that.
Thank you.
Actually, kind of given a gift, you can't really.
You can't not vote for it.
Can't not vote for it.
But that looks stupid.
Yeah, then they can make him vote for us. Okay, so last, I'm going to jump to the public safety complex re-roofing on-call services, because I think there's some people waiting in the audience for this.
I think it's been requested that this be put off.
Change of plan on this. First of all, our committee needs to apologize for the lateness of all these things, but unfortunately, the architect services that we have hired had some very serious personal issues that have really stopped the process of a lot of the things that we needed done soon. Looks like it's on track. I had a long conversation with the gentleman that had looked at our specs previously, actually quite a number of months ago. He was very surprised that this had not gone forward. But through that conversation, well, what our first ask, request was from Inlingwin and Sharples, was to review what we had and tell us if they were good enough for the D-CAM process. He has, by this conversation this morning, he said no, and he gave me some good examples of why it wasn't good. So what we'd like to request of you is to, the proposal that you have in front of you is three, there's three phases. Phase one is the specs. That, we would like you to go forward with approving that at this point. We are not going to go forward at this moment with phase two and, and phase three. But we, that's the bidding of the project right now in the construction administration. We need to talk to them some more on that and get a good feel for what is going to be incurred in those two phases. But we have noted and like to go forward with phase one, we recommend.
So phase, phase one cost how much?
Eleven thousand.
Eleven thousand.
What do you anticipate the phase two and phase three, when are we going to do that? I mean, should we be using Lungrim and Sharples, if you still have questions regarding their company, to do the designing, and then all of a sudden, if they're gone in a year and we decide to go forward with that plan, are we giving somebody else a plan that?
Well, the, the bids go, that's one of the reasons why we wanted to conclude, just do phase one at this time. Let's get the specs out, let's get this project on board. If things do not go forward with our architect right now, we are in the process of discussing that and going with our second choice. We need to get these projects going, he has assured us that his issues are taken care of, and then he's going to jump on, because there's like four or five that we've, we've had in the process for quite some time, and they've been solved. But he has assured us that he's got the people on board to help us and get these things going quickly, and we want to see the turnaround quickly. This is the first one, he's got to get this done, because we're really in a time crunch on this one.
Okay, then why don't we go with two and three, then? Why are we holding up on that?
Because if we, if, if it turns out that they cannot complete phase one in a timely manner, we do not want.
Them to do two and three.
Them to do two and three.
So the eleven thousand dollars is coming from the money appropriated for the roof?
Yeah, so there are two pots of money, there's a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand for the, for the roof project that could come from there, as well as approximately forty thousand dollars left over in the on-call article.
You'd like it to come from the on-call?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion?
Make a motion to authorize the chair to execute, no.
Yeah, phase one.
Just a motion to proceed with phase one?
Okay.
And to fund it out of the on-call services?
Okay, so you don't have to sign this?
We all, I think we all have to sign this.
I do, okay. All right, so make a motion to proceed with the phase one of the project as outlined in the memo from the municipal building committee?
Second.
Any more discussion?
Yeah, last year we talked about leftover monies from the individual accounts and how we were going to be able to funnel and use that money for other projects. Once we, we did that, we pulled it off town meeting floor, because we were going to do that internally and be able to take the money that were left over from the individual projects. And is there money, is there eleven thousand dollars there that we can utilize for that? There's not?
No.
No, no.
How much is there?
Just a couple of grand.
If you add them all up right now, I mean, some of them haven't been done, but you're talking just a few thousand, maybe two or three, rough figure.
We were kind of hoping to have some money left over from these bigger projects, I think.
Okay.
Okay, so motions on the table, seconds on the table, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Okay, two more items to do, three more. Annual report dedication, we've had lots of input, I understand.
We have a lot of input. We, we were taking it around in the office, we were wondering if you would consent to award the Fred Oakley Volunteer Award to Irene Benben and Ellen Bai, and then dedicate the annual report to Howard Koski, Dan DeKevitz, and Constance Mistrzakowski.
That's a lot of people.
Yeah, you've done it before. It's actually fewer people than you've done in the past.
In one, one year?
Yep.
What's the most you've ever done?
Four.
Well, you've done a whole department.
Well, that doesn't really count.
Well, it does. Like twenty people.
Okay, all right.
I, I saw a wonderful suggestion that we dedicate the town in court to Connie, and I, I think that's a great suggestion, and I, I think that we can, you know, those other people aren't going anywhere either, and I know Danny's done some wonderful things, but Connie, in her year after she got done, I think would be a wonderful tribute to her. And then I wouldn't, I don't want to say watered down, but I think that, I think that we should consider her solely for the dedication on that. And the Fred Oakley Award to the two folks, it's a wonderful idea as well. folks is a wonderful idea as well. That would be my suggestion.
Helen Bye and I remember... And have we done the dedication to employees, retired employees?
Mike Clomsky, Eddie Foreman.
Eddie Foreman's what happened.
Yeah, that's right, Eddie, yep.
Dennis Huckwitz.
As my kids say, Mr. ...
It's my motion.
I'll second it.
Any more discussion? Dedicated these reports, though, I kind of knew the piece, so I'm still trying to figure it out.
Yeah, I mean, it's, seems like there should be a better way, although, how you come up with one, you know?
There's so many people who do things and make this town work.
That's the thing, yeah.
I mean, if people don't do things, it's...
Took us 362 years to do this.
Yeah.
I think we should leave Howard Kosky and Dan DeCavitz on top of the list for next year or whoever is sitting on the board.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Do you want to talk about it some more?
I mean, I don't know, now I'm kind of leaning towards...
All of them.
All of them, yeah.
It is kind of a concept.
You've done it in 2013 if you dedicated it to four people and gave a Fred Oakley Award.
I'll go with that one.
Motion second on the floor, Chair.
Still discussing your motion and second?
I'm sorry, I thought it was being amended.
No.
You guys want a quarter order to flip or what?
No, I mean, we kind of like David's suggestion to not let anybody drop off. Drop off. Since the nomination came after the fact of what we were, what we were going to take under consideration, then I would just suggest making amendment to the motion.
Not received. Motion is second on the floor, Chair, vote or not.
Any more discussion on it? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion fails.
All those against the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
I think on you guys, it's kind of hard to make that choice, so it's just not...
Motion fails.
Making a motion.
I mean, there's a lot of years of service.
Procedure, procedure.
Tonight's been too hard.
I think they're all important, that's how I feel, so I'm going with the other suggestion of...
So, is there a motion?
All three, I'll make a motion that...
Well, wait a minute, did you vote yet?
I abstained. Two, two.
Are you serious?
That we did. So, I'll make a motion to have the dedication of the book to Howard, Dan, Connie, and then the Fred Oakley Award to Irene and Helen.
And I'll second that motion.
Any more discussion about it?
No.
No. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Well, we all...
We agreed.
You shud yourself to your abstention.
I don't think we're running out of books for next year, I just...
So, there's so many people who do things, though.
There's always more.
It's so great, I mean, it's one thing about cool about this town is everybody gets involved and does things and want to be involved and wants to do things, but then it makes it hard when we want to award people things. But don't stop doing things, people, keep helping us out.
You too could be a annual report.
Bridge update, please.
Okay, so the Mass. DOT started working on the bridge. They've closed it down to one lane, they've reduced the weight to three tons, they've installed traffic advisory signs and signalization. This is the bridge of Fort River on Bay Road. We've been working with Mass. DOT in order to provide emergency services, snow plowing, bus routes and trying to make the detour as livable as possible, trying to protect Looney Bridge Road and the residents there from excessive traffic impact. We've worked with our mutual aid providers as well as PBTA and some of the surrounding communities that provide emergency services, particularly ambulance along Bay Road, so, you know, it's a difficult situation, we're making the best of it. Mass. DOT has to wait till low water conditions before they start repairing the supports, so this is going to be a summer project, so we'll have this situation for the next six months. If there's any issues that arise, you know, that we could get in touch with the Mass. DOT and that they'll be responsive to that. Mr. Devine was talking to me about some ideas about how to alleviate some of the weight restriction. We will certainly explore those with Mass. DOT and see what...
Yeah, I would definitely like an answer to why they put the Jersey barriers on the bridge rather than lightweight barrels or cones or some other kind of traffic solution rather than putting all that weight on the bridge.
That's a good question. And then limit the amount of vehicles that can go over.
You know, they could raise the tunnel limit if they took the Jersey barriers off for sure, there's no doubt in my mind about that.
Although...
You know, they're worried about an ambulance and...
It's the state.
I understand that, but I think it needs to be addressed.
I do too, they're saying it's the state's rules, that's what I'm saying sarcastically.
You need to be careful about bridges in New England because you actually get the most corrosion on the outside girders.
Yeah.
So, the outside girders are the worst and then comes in, so even though the pilings may be bad, the girders may have an issue too and the point may be with not putting cones and barrels on it is that they don't want people driving on those outside girders, so that might be their answer.
Yeah, but they've got, they've got the Jersey barriers set up on both sides of the bridge, which those can stay because they're not carrying any, you know, they're not carrying load, they're not on a bridge. See, actual Jersey barriers on the bridge that they have, probably, I don't know how many tons of Jersey barriers sitting on...
There's 32, there's 32 Jersey barriers on the bridge, they weigh 4,670 pounds apiece.
Can we get the civil engineers resolve this?
We should ask the question, but I think that's...
Steve's going to ask.
Yeah, we'll ask the question, we'll follow up and, you know, obviously, we want to work with Mass. DOT so that we preserve public safety, but we also want to reduce the inconvenience to the motorists as well.
So, do we have a executive session thing?
Yes, we have two very quick items of business we can take care of it in a jiffy.
All right, so do we have any announcements?
Like to congratulate the basketball team to go 20-0, boys' basketball team, won the game the other night, a little bit close on that one, but made it anyways and they're on the tournament, congratulations, guys.
Girls are on to tournament also. They made tournament.
Yeah, they did.
Oh, wow.
Excellent.
Congratulations to them also.
I got a comment about our public comment section there. If the accusation was true for the Finance Committee, I'd like a lot of research done on it and some answers on that also.
Yeah, we'll look into that.
Never mind, I'm not even getting into it tonight because I could go ahead.
Yep, and then we did sign the Commonwealth Community Compact at a ceremony and we received this lovely portfolio to commemorate the event, so I'm looking forward to implementation and the exploration of best practices, right?
Congratulations.
Okay, any other announcements? Isn't there a tournament this weekend?
Cornhole tournament?
There is a...
Oh, yeah.
Cornhole tournament at the grammar school on Sunday, starting at 10 o'clock, double elimination. I understand there's 34 teams that are signed up for it. Everybody come and enjoy it. There's also going to be a raffle ticket, there's a raffle table there as well.
Come to work with me.
34.
Okay.
All right, I make a motion to go into executive session for discussion of contract negotiations. Will not reconvene in open session.
Hi, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
Jumping the gun there.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Second. All right, as the Chair of the Hadley Select Board, I state that the board has moved and seconded to enter to executive session and I state that the discussion of the matter in open session could have an adverse effect on the town of Hadley. We will not reconvene, so, good night, everybody.
Good night.
Roll call?
Roll call, vote, wants DeCavitz?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Chuck Love?
Yes.
Yes.